This is More Than Work, the podcast reminding you that your self-worth is made up of more than your job title. Each week I'll talk to a guest about how they discovered that for themselves. You'll hear about what they did, what they're doing, and who they are. I'm your host, Rabia. I work in IT, perform stand-up comedy, write, volunteer, and of course, podcasts. Thank you for listening. Here we go. Hey, everyone. So first of all, thanks for listening to the pre-roll. I'm running that on my show right now because I have to speak up, have to say something. I'm also really proud that I have the guest I do this week. Last week, there was a little bit of focus on inclusion, especially for the LGBTQ community, and this week, there's even more with my guest Andrew Tavon. He is running for school district in the town I grew up in, which is pretty cool because he's stuck around and he's really doing the good work there. I met him when I was working on Christie Smith's campaign out in California, Katie Hill's campaign too, and generally, at the time, the Clinton campaign, because I was there during the 2016 election, which is insane that I was there that long ago, living there. But it's great to have Andrew on. He's also done a lot of work with a center in Los Angeles for LGBTQI plus youth. We talk a lot about how he's helped families through that and PFLAG, and then also just how he's led his life of service, which doesn't just focus on that, but also education and many other things. It's special to have someone on who's quite a bit younger than me, who I respect so much for what they're pursuing, and a little bit different episode of More Than Work, because it's someone who's pursuing what he loves right out the gate. And we talked a little bit about what he thinks that means in the future and what he might be doing. So I will keep it short and sweet today, because you've already listened to my voice at the top, too. Just do what you can to help people. That's all I'm asking on this episode, and I think that Andrew is a great example of someone who does that. Andrew, thank you for the impact you've had on me. This is for you listeners who are celebrating Pride Month. This is for those who have come out and haven't yet come out. This is for everyone. So take care. Well, everyone, today I have a really special guest on because he's someone that I know personally that I actually met when I lived with my mom when I was in my late 30s. And I met him in my hometown, but his name is Andrew Tavon, and he is currently the candidate for the William S. Hart Union School District trustee area, too. So he's running for school board and does a lot of other work. So thanks for being a guest, Andrew.
Thank you for having me. I'm super excited to be here and also to just be on a podcast with you because you don't live in the same hometown anymore.
No, no, I got out of there again and out of the country. So where am I talking to you from right now?
I am in Santa Clarita, California, and I'm currently in my living room.
Well, that's, I mean, that's one of the better places to be sometimes, like just in a comfortable spot. People try to take podcast interviews from like their cars sometimes and stuff, and you don't want to do that. So.
Oh, no, very noisy. And it's pretty quiet here. My air is not going. And you know what? Thanks to COVID, I fully now have a place where I can have video or voice calls at all times. So it's been beneficial.
Cool. So first of all, I guess we can just talk about where Santa Clarita is. And it's a unique place in California, just because in Los Angeles County, it's
Yeah.
really the only place that's notoriously like been read. But can you talk a little bit about Santa Clarita and your experience growing up there, basically?
Yeah. So for those who kind of want to know like geographically, we're part of Northern LA County, not the furthest region, but we're Northern LA. A lot of people know us more for Magic Mountain, so Six Flags. Santa Clarita, so I have been more in the political sense in this region, but it is a quickly changing part of Southern California. So I mean, right, we just got new census data for our 2020, and you know, we are increasingly diversifying. We are increasing a lot in population. I personally love living here. It has changed a lot since I've been here when I was, oh, boy, a while ago. I think I moved here when I was eight years old. So growing up here was pretty interesting. We had been more, I'll say conservative mindset on how things are. But you know, we've really, we've changed as an area, as people. Overall, I love my community. It is a great place to grow up. I really like that we're like 30 minutes away if I want to go and do stuff like in Hollywood or Los Angeles, and I can just come back and be in a little quiet area. I live in New Holland specifically, so I'm pretty close to our Main Street. That's the name of the street, by the way. I just Main Street for people who are listening. And it's now, we're all like this, this stuff happens on the weeknights and weekends. It's become like a cute little boutique street where we have all these city events and whatnot. So it's actually a pretty nice place.
Yeah, it's funny because I, I mean, I'm quite a bit older than you. So I grew up basically a whole generation before you. I hope not more than one generation in Santa Clarita. And when I lived there as a kid, it was very much conservative. And when I left, I remember I left when I was 18, and I remember telling my mom, I'll never be back. And she's like, okay. And I did come back for holidays and
Yep.
whatever. And then I moved home for a while, you know, and it had changed a lot in that time, right?
Oh, yeah. Actually, it's so funny. I have so many friends who are, who are like, I'm moving out of Santa Clarita. And this was, because now I'm 25, and they are all in their 40s, and they all live back in, it's Santa Clarita, because you know, it's a place that brings you back. We're the third largest city in LA County, but we are also just a very tight-knit community. So it's, it's just, it's like this weird, beautiful thing. And then all my friends who ended up moving out all came back.
Mm-hmm. I can see that. It was a good place to grow up generally, and pretty safe. And there were a lot of just nice things there. I remember like my first jobs were there and everything. So I'll just talk about like when I came back and I met you, I started working just with, in the politics space. And I'm fine mentioning people who listen to this podcast. I haven't hidden the fact that, you know, I've worked in Democratic politics, just based on who I've had on even. But I met you during that. I was impressed because this had to be about five years ago now, actually, which is really weird to think. But you were really young. You were 20, and you had already been doing a lot of stuff. So you started actually doing things to serve others, though, from junior high, basically, right? Like, this has been something ingrained in you for a long time.
So I guess I kind of started this when I was around like 13 years old. And the first way it started was that was around budget cuts, when we had our big recession in around 2008. And so like, one of the things that the district that I'm actually running for now, that we faced at that point with budget cuts when I was going from junior high, was they cut all of our promotion ceremonies. And you know, it was like, it's a big deal to go from junior high to high school for a teenager. It's like this rite of passage coming up. And one of the things that, and all of us were disappointed by it, was it's like, well, this can't happen. So it wasn't just me. It was like this great team of people. We came together consistently, and how we can do this promotion ceremony for all the students in the district, for those who want to participate, right? Because to some people, it's, it's not a big deal. And so for anyone who wants to do it, and that's kind of how I just started my, my journey, I guess. I really more came from the nonprofit sector of it. And all I've known is like since growing up is I really wanted to help people. And you know, when you're a kid, the first thing you think of is like, oh, that's a doctor. But then I realized those people work with blood and needles. And I was like, yeah, maybe doctor or medical is just not the field I'm going to go into. So from 13 on, it was like this really interesting journey of just finding out what I was going to be doing, because I knew what I wanted to do, which was to help people. I just didn't really know how. I went on to working with young individuals with disability and helping them through equestrian therapy. And I kind of started helping my, my local schools that I moved on from. And so would help in the classroom or work in English language development or a special education program. And I would be volunteering with my aunt at her school because she was vice principal at the time. I ended up, I just looked to be really driving into education-based. I developed a big passion for it, and it just kind of kept going in there. And then helped on a couple of nonprofits out here, and it was all mostly youth-based. And so, and here we are, fast forward over, over 10 years later, and I'm still doing what I do, I guess. Yeah.
Yeah. So as far as just the education space, I mean, I know for me, as a kid who, you know, just had different things going on at home or outside of school, some educators became very important to me in like forming my beliefs about even myself, right? And kind of changing those things for me. And that's my experience. And also, I really love school. What is it for you, do you think, that's driven you to care about school and the education space?
So for me, there are a couple of educators who always stick out to me as one of my people, right? So educators, and it's perfect because it's also Teacher Appreciation Week right now. So
Oh, nice.
Yeah, May 2nd through the 6th. So it's to see the potential that a person has to change a young person's life, to put them on the right track, help them. So to me, education really isn't what I think people think it was. It's not just this kid is going to go to this school and, and be taught for eight hours and then go home, right? It's educators and, and all this like support staff. They're not just educating anymore. They're, they're a friend, a role model, sometimes the person who's giving that kid access to a meal, giving them products that they may need. So education has really taken on a much greater role, I think, than people realize. And to me personally, when I was in like in the state assembly, we got to work on a lot of education policy, and I really loved doing that. But also, one of the things that I think in education is, to me, it is one of the greatest equalizers all people have. So you know, a great society starts with a great education. And I think when you're, when all your individuals of a society are educated, it has always proven to be a better society. You know, you get, you get greater industry growth in those cases. You have a better medical industry, education system. So really, education to me is really the root of a lot of solutions to problems that we currently have and that we don't know we're going to have. And so it builds innovation. It is this incredible concept to think that when you start with this young person, and they can end up becoming the most incredible person in society, and, and could be one of our greatest problem solvers, or could just be this great contributing member to society, or could just be a great person, right? Education opens up so many doors. And it's not just, you must be a productive part of society, but it's just you're opening your mind to so many different new opportunities and possibilities.
Can you think of one maybe educator that did change things for you?
Yes. My English teacher. In high school, I had one English teacher, and we're actually still very good friends to this day. I always thank her for where I am in my life, because I was going through a pretty rough time in high school. I'm not like I was an awful student or anything, but as one does in high school. And she was like this one person who just did not give up on me. She would be there during lunchtime to talk, during brunch, also known as recess for like elementary school students, in the middle of, of class periods, or you know, she would check in on me. Like, when I was not feeling hopeful about myself, I knew she did. She saw something in me. And that was just a really big deal growing up. You know, it's sometimes when you feel like you got nobody, but to know that there is somebody there who's counting on your success in life, and who's really rooting for you, that was a really big deal.
Yeah, that's great. It's really great. And one of my favorite people is actually an English teacher, too. And maybe that's why we're both such good talkers. We have a grip on the language now. So you mentioned that your work in the California State Assembly, and you were an education liaison there, right? So can you talk a little bit about your experience that way?
Yeah. So at that time, I had, well, we had just gotten in, and I worked as the one-term Assemblywoman who brought one of the greatest changes to some public education reform. And I think over 20 years or longer, it was Assemblywoman Christie Smith. And so she actually had served in our local school district out here for nine years and had moved on to the state assembly. And so when I was hired on, I got to be the, the head of education liaison, which, you know, to me, was a really big deal. And I thought I was going to have to argue about it. Nobody else wanted this position. Like, it was really just me. And the reason why that was so fascinating is because, you know, education in the state of California, it equates for about like half of our state's budget. It's a really big portion. And so I thought that's fascinating. And for somebody who has the opportunity to influence what could go on in, in education, not me personally, right? The Assemblywoman and the, and the state legislature, why would somebody not want to be a part of that, you know? One of the, to me, greatest things that the Assemblywoman did at the time, and I got to be a part of it, was we met with all the superintendents of our districts first and foremost to see, okay, what is it that we need in education? What can we do better? What is it that our districts need? Can we bring resources back? Can we change anything? And to see that kind of was a defining moment to me, because this was a political figure who was really putting the actions to what she believed. You know, like, a lot of people say things, but she did it. And it's great to meet with these superintendents, because the state of California is extremely diverse in what we need and what the, what, I mean, just throughout the state, right? Northern California is so different from Southern California. What they may need in schools could be different than what we need in schools. So it was so interesting to see what is it that our superintendents need. Within the districts, they're already pretty, pretty different. I mean, of course, the number one thing that everyone says is we need money, which makes sense. That is always going to be this issue. But so we had some pretty increasing reforms. So one of them was how we can do transparency in our school systems, because there's a responsibility to our taxpayers, right? They should know where their money is going, and how can we be holding ourselves better accountable to report to our taxpayers? One of them involved like teacher credentialing. I think what a lot of people wanted was more of a, of an elected official who, who hears out what's going on. You don't necessarily need to create laws to change things, but maybe it's about the dynamic of, of your administration of your school, whether it could be a school board. And I think a lot of parents and educators and students were like, I want to be heard. And so I think people were realizing the direct impact a local school board, or their, their admin team of a school has on their life. And I think that was the most interesting thing about talking to them was, okay, well, maybe the state doesn't have a direct impact, and we're not, we don't need to write a law about this. But what we can do is we can help build this dialogue between your admin and yourself to see what is it that you may want. It could be a board policy change. It could be maybe a new rule in just your school. But to really see from that, because I think what people want most of all is to know that you're elected, or you're representative, or who's supposed to be your champion, is there listening to you, talking this out with you, seeing how they can best resolve this issue with you? Because at the end of the day, you know, if you want your student to get, or just students in general, to get a good education, we have to start lifting these barriers that could be presented to them. And I think that was one of the most interesting things about being an education liaison with it is, okay, well, let's see what we can do on this level, but let's also see what we can do on this level for you.
Yeah, that makes sense. And I think that people, you know, in any kind of politics, the national politics always take over, but locally, that's where things will change that affect your day-to-day life. And that was something I learned, even just working with you for quite a bit of time and, and a few other people. But it's, it's really interesting. And so I guess one question then I have for you, too, is did you think about, when you were looking at like your career, and you're still pretty early, but in your adult life, but, and you talked about service, but I'm wondering, did you consider other options before going into the political side of things? And did you even start working towards something before you ended up in, in this area?
Yeah. So politics was kind of an accident. Like, it, it just happened. So I was really more eyeballing the nonprofit sector of things. And I, so I was actually one of the youngest people to, or I think the youngest person to actually run in my city, because this is my second bid for school board. The first time I did, I was 18 years old. I was like, all right, let's, let's go for it. I was more encouraged to do so. But it was like, that ended up being the start to something that I didn't think I would be where I'm at now. So I, like I said, it was just always about helping people. And to me, the nonprofit sector is, is really where you get to do that. So that was kind of more what I was going for. And like, I accidentally ended up here. So I started like doing, in high school, I did a policy and advocacy camp over the weekend. And that was really more to understand the dynamics and systems of government and how like me as a citizen, right? I can, I can benefit my fellow citizens or residents of the area that I'm in, and to advocate my state legislators, legislators, and so on. But that was kind of just where I was going. And then I slowly started to get involved more and more in like policy work and, and government and politics. And somehow, it's like a trap. It just kind of, it gets you, and then you can't leave. And I love the work I do. I mean, at the end of the day, it's, you want to help people, and, and there are so many different avenues of doing that. And somehow, this just became mine. And so
Yeah.
Yeah. Here, here I am to this day.
So what's changed for you? I mean, I know a lot in your life has probably changed, but from when you were 18 running to now, is your approach different?
Um, I, yes and no. I guess you could say, you know, as you grow older, there, you learn how to better maneuver through systems. One thing that for sure changed, I did here when I was 18, now I don't. So that was really the biggest thing. But I, I think the mission has never changed, is, is how do we leave the world a better place than, than when we entered it, right? So the mission of that has not changed for me. I do want to leave, I don't think I'm dying anytime soon, right? But like, I still want to leave this planet, the systems that are in place, a better place for our future generations. I guess the, the way I've gone about it has changed, right? I'm now in the, in this political sphere. But even when I look, right, as, because this is, this is really where we are as just, as a country, and I think worldwide is right now, we're all very divided. And things are in a really tough situation. But for me, at the end of the day, I think we all agree, we want clean air, we want clean water, we want a good future left for our young people. And, and I think that is something that we can all agree on. There's too often this, this moment where we will disagree on things. And right, there are some things that there, there is no coming together, right? And I understand that. But when it comes to systems of like that I'm going for right now, like local governance, I know there are things we all want. We have different ways of getting there, but, and we need to get to a point where we can come together again, even though we may disagree, and say, okay, well, how do we achieve this goal of, of what we both want? And how do we negotiate or make it better? I know it always feels like we are at a tipping point of society, and there are some things that, right, there are some people you just can't work with. And, and I get that. I've been there. But how do we bring the people to the table who we can work with, and even maybe some that we can't, and, and find a way to make this better? So, and push egos aside and everything, and say, okay, this is our goal. We want to make it a better place for the future generations, and even the current generation. And how are we going to achieve it? And so that mission has never changed. And I want to get back to a point where, where we can do that.
Yeah. Well, that's great. And I do think, yeah, it's interesting, because even in work, I mean, there's all places in our lives, and it happens over time where there's someone that we don't necessarily want to work with, but we have to. And I've heard people say before, well, never work with them again. Well, that's fine. You can say that. But then if you end up at the same table as you're saying,
Yeah.
it's really hard not to, right? And so I do think that, even though I'm very stubborn, and I know me personally, there's certain people, I've unfriended on Facebook, for example, but that's not a real space where I have to engage. But if I am with someone in person and stuff, I do have to engage, or if it's part of my job. And so I think that, then yeah, you have to find the commonalities. And I like that, that's kind of, that's what you're thinking. And you're right, there are certain things we all want.
Yeah.
Too. So as far as your campaign, and then I want to talk about some other things, but just, I, you know, do some research. I don't know if people know that, but the podcast host usually tries to research the person a little bit. You have three areas of focus. So representation, funding, and student wellness. Can you talk a little bit about those? Just because I think, especially in the area of representation, people would hear that word and think all different things about it.
Yeah. So representation, I think, goes on multiple fronts. If we're just looking at me as just a person, right? I'm young, I am a Middle Eastern mixed individual who is part of the LGBTQ plus community. So I think if we're just looking at that, right? Okay, there's, there's that form of representation. But also another thing, when I look at representation, it is about having, we'll call them stakeholders of the district, represented in a district level. So one of the things I've gotten a lot of talking with parents, faculty, educators, students, is they are not heard at the district level. And if they are, it's by a very select few board members. It's not really a majority. And so I think when it comes to representation, what I kind of always say is, you don't need to just have a seat at the table, but you deserve a voice at the table, and you shouldn't have to fight for it. You, we're, we are elected to be that voice for you, and we should be getting that voice and representing you. We may not all agree, right, on, on what one another is saying, but we are elected to represent everybody of our district. And I think representation is really a critical role in that. When it comes to funding, funding is a very interesting mechanism. And people are estimating, right, we're going to go into a recession in, in here. And the way that California education works is our, our funding really is dependent on what we are making. There's not a big consistent, it kind of just depends. And so I think when it comes to that is when you, there are of course, things that must be done, right? So there's restricted funds, there's unrestricted funds, things that you already have allocated, so salary and all that. But there's a pool of funding that a, a board gets to decide on, on what happens to it. And so I, I always say, as a, as a person running for office, I will never make promises like, yeah, this is exactly what's going to happen with that, because I am one person, is majority vote, it's a five-person board. And you don't really know fully all the resources you have until you're in that position, right? And seeing all the asks on the table. But I really want to focus a lot, and it kind of ties into student wellness and our faculty. We've had a really rough two years with, with COVID. And so when it ties in with student wellness and all these other resources, is our budget reflective of our values as a district? Are we making sure that what our students, teachers need, are those things being met? Are we doing good pay? Are we having modernization of buildings? Are we really keeping the promise to the taxpayers that we are using their money wisely? And so that's kind of what I want to see on that. And when we go into student wellness, it has a lot to do with, you know, we have wellness centers throughout the district, but also are their needs being met? I got to do a couple of tours with, we call them wellness centers, in the district. So I want to make sure that the needs of our students are being met on what level. And I think another big important factor to that, when it comes even to representation, is it's a big deal to me. I know when I was a student in the district, if a board member comes up to you and says, you know, what is it that you need? Or is that these open houses? That's a big deal, because it is a person working on achieving the goals of not only what the district should be doing, but what is it that the individuals that are in the district need, you know? So student wellness is, is a really big deal, because a student doesn't have the ability to succeed if we're really not meeting their most basic of basic needs. Does the student have, student have stable housing? Are they being fed? Are they being able to sleep at night? Are they psychologically at like peace, pretty much? Do they have all of these needs being met before they can go up to the next level? Because you're not going to get an education or a great education if you are worried about where's my next meal going to come from tonight. So I think that student wellness is a pretty big thing, and I think the district has a role to play in that.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. And a lot of kids have very adult problems to deal with. And, and they need to be addressed. And though maybe the school can't address everything, and I feel like that with work, like my company can't make sure everyone's happy, but it can definitely help in certain ways, right? So one thing you did mention when we talked about representation is that you are a part of the LGBTQ plus community, and you've done work in that area, too.
Yeah. So the way it kind of started was I was part of GSA Network in, in high school. So we worked on a lot of legislation at those, goodness gracious, we worked on a lot of legislation, actually. So we worked on bits of those, and I became a board member of PFLAG, so Parents and Friends of Lesbians and Gays, in my local chapter. So I've been on a board of that, working with parents and, and young adults and youth, just to, you know, how can we make home life better? I was also in the state assembly of the LGBTQ plus representative for that. In my college experience, I was the head and president of RGSA in college and high school. I used to work, it's called LifeWorks, and it was part of Los Angeles LGBT Center. And this was not too long ago, but it was, it was a little bit ago. And so one of the things that we used to do there is we would do trainings and, and like little classes for young individuals. And so I would go and we would be able to teach LGBTQ plus history. And just pretty much what, it was kind of developed around what the students wanted to hear. So a lot of it was history. They wanted to know about, you know, the, their culture and their history as students, and anything else kind of that the, the, the program would set for us to teach at the time. And so that was, it was wonderful. And I used to be part of, or I guess I still am now, yeah, the Models of Pride. So it's one of the largest LGBTQ conferences in the United States. And so that was, it was wonderful. And I used to be part of, or I guess I still am now, yeah, the Models of Pride. So it's one of the largest LGBTQ conferences in the United States. And it's set for parents and students on all levels to pretty much just come in. It's a place for parents to understand what's going on in their life and see how to be a better ally or supporter, or even just help other parents. And for students, multiple different types of workshops. And so I used to teach there as well.
Oh, that's great. And I mean, you could just be part of the community again, but not be involved in advocacy for it. And did you, was it a decision for you or did it just kind of happen in the way other things did that you just kind of are there to help? Because I can see that not, not everyone who is part of that community is going to be able to stand up and talk to parents or talk to other people. And I'm sure you have encountered different conversations that were difficult.
Yeah. So it, I kind of get my, like most of it stumbled into it. I think one of the biggest driving forces for me was, it was, there are so many people in this community who feel marginalized. And they feel like they don't have a voice. And to me, that is the, it is the, one of the worst things. Because not only are you just part of this community where you feel like you're not being heard, but you, you don't have a mechanism where you can see it happening. And so it was, to me, it was how do we ensure a system where people who don't feel heard can be heard? And so that's kind of just how I, I started getting into it. But it, it kind of came back to the end of the day, like your home life, as a young person, you deserve to feel safe and loved in your own home. And for, for those students who were in that coming out process, it, it's a rough experience. You don't necessarily know how the family is going to react, or even if it's, it's a positive experience, it's a transition in, into a new, I guess, kind of life. And so I want to be able to help with that in any way, right? I, I wouldn't just be like, hi, I'm Andrew, like, no, like it would have to be like, can you help with the situation? Of course, if they're comfortable in what they're comfortable in. But yeah, I was interested in having conversations with some parents, because one of the things that we always said was when a child comes out of the closet, or not even a child, right? Whatever age, young adult comes out, we always say the parent would go back in the closet. And because, you know, you have also, much like your child, you have an image in your mind of what your kid is going to be or whatnot. And so that, that has now also been altered a little bit. And so how do we find the best path forward for both parties? To really come together, because at the end of the day, most of the time that parent just loves that kid no matter what. And so a lot of this comes from fear or, or questions and what, what is going to happen for my child? And so and also the, the young individual has that same, a lot of those same questions. So it's like, how can we best maneuver and have these conversations and be educating the families as well as making sure that the, the best outcome for the young individual is met?
Yeah. And it's important work because I mean, there, there's, even though I think to the people who are kind of just, it's, they don't look at people's sexuality as something that's their business, basically, or they don't care, like this is my friend, and this is my friend, this is my friend. They could be any sexuality, doesn't matter. It's hard to see that that's not the case for everyone. And so and you think, well, it should be easy, but actually there are still a lot of people who think a different way, or maybe even people go, well, I'm fine with people being just gay, just to make it simple to say, right? But then if it's someone that, that's in their family or their kid, then all of a sudden it's not okay. Cause it's like, well, it was other people, it wasn't me. And I, I think that it's interesting because I've heard people, like different people say, you know, I don't know why there's all this messaging, or I don't know why there's all this, um, like special, like programs now and stuff, but it's, it's because there's still a, a problem, basically, right? There's no one ever has to come out as straight.
Yeah. Uh, you know, and I think what, one of the biggest things that killed me was part of our center was we took in homeless youth who were, who were displaced from housing. And I remember one time they're like, okay, well, we actually need to get more beds because we have more people than we do beds now. And it was this insane thought to think that these youth were kicked out of their homes. I mean, for just for this mere thing. And so it, it was just, it was painful to see. And these are, I think they were great kids, like sweet people, just everyday person, just like us who, who was removed from their secure housing because of, of who they are. And I think that was the most insane thing that, that, that just blew my mind. It's, you know, they're your flesh and blood. And yeah, it, it was just heartbreaking.
It's good that there are people and organizations that are helping because it, it is really important and just people, yeah, getting displaced. And it's kind of, that's not always a story of someone else. But it could be a story in, in people's families. I don't know who listens, you know, so it could be anyone. You're a unique guest because I would say because of your age, you didn't go through this whole thing that a lot of my guests have gone through where they did a career for 20 years, completely burned out, decided to do something new, but you've actually just, you've figured out your purpose and you've been pursuing it. Have you wondered if this is going to be your path for your entire life? Or how's that looking for you and working for you? Because I know when I was 25, I didn't know that there were other careers possible after the one I chose. So I was just kind of stuck already. And so I think it's different in your generation. Because you guys are already being told like you can do several things. So how are you feeling right now, just in thinking about like the path you're on now and, and how it might look in the future? Cause someone young, younger listening might be thinking about how, oh, if I do this thing now, I'm stuck doing it forever still, you know?
Yeah. I, I mean, to me, the most interesting thing is a person can just leave at any, at any point. I've, I mean, I'm, I'm running for office, so I think it'd be really awkward to just be like, all right, bye y'all. But I, I mean, I do, I do love what I do. To where I see myself in like 10 to 20 years, I don't know. To me, the mission hasn't changed is, again, how can I best help people? The most interesting thing about elections, right, is the voters decide. I could very well not win. And I think that is the most interesting thing about elections. Sometimes it really is not up to you. The public decides whether or not your life will be changing or not in, in the ballot. But to me, like, right, if I don't win, which I really hope I do, but the, yeah, I'll have, I'll have to do some, a little bit of changing here of what, what the plan is. But again, the mission just doesn't change. It's how do we leave the environment? Like the environment, environment, but also just the, the image as a whole, the best for the future. And that's not going to change. I don't know what would be held next for me. And I mean, I could say, right, oh, I'm just going to go right back to nonprofits. I, I don't know. I, I don't know that for sure. So to me, nothing is guaranteed. Politics in general is a tiring field. There is no, no disagreement there, because how do you collectively get a big chunk of society to agree on this is what we should have? It's, it's difficult and I've sat on boards with seven people and it's hard to come to an agreement at that point. It's challenging, but it, it's something I love to do because I think there's something interesting in, in when you, when you work in this realm of knowing that there are things you are doing to benefit people's lives in which you will never meet. And they will never meet you, you know? But there, you know that like, okay, there's, there's a family out there who's doing better because of policies or beliefs that we, we set forth. Or in listening to a community of, okay, this is something we could just impact and change and make someone's life a little better. And, and you, and, and you can do that. And so I think that's kind of the most interesting thing.
Yeah. Cool. And speaking of you being in a difficult field, what do you do to get a break? Or how do you do that? Because in a way, if you're in an office or even you've been working for other people, you're doing work that really impacts other people's lives. And I imagine there's a little bit of a burden that comes with that. So what do you do to create some balance for yourself?
That is a very good question. You know, I think it varies. I think self-care is a very important factor. Um, I think for anybody who works with, with other human beings, because it really does come, or I mean, even animals, right? It comes back to this point of how do you make a positive impact if you're not in a positive place yourself? So for me, it, it kind of varies. There are some nights where I just want to be with friends. I love to be with my friends being in a, in a, or family in like a positive environment. Sometimes it's just that. Sometimes it's just coming home, having a cup of tea, sitting down, watching a show or just kind of being at peace. Sometimes it's going on a hike where there's no cell service, which is a beautiful part of hiking trails. So I, I think it varies. It depends on my stress level or, or, or kind of what's going on. I told you, I had just, I, today's my first day negative of COVID after nine days.
Yeah.
I was isolated at home. And honestly, it is the, for me personally, this is not the case for everybody. It was the biggest pain to me to know that I could not be out and about in my community, right? Doing stuff that I do on a, on a regular basis. I couldn't be at, at, at doing a drive for somebody or helping. Like, so I, I think that kind of is my joy. Is I love to do community service and be out and about with my community members. I love where I live and I love the people that I get to serve alongside and, and the community I get to, to serve. And so I think that is kind of my, my joy and that I feel that is my purpose. But I think just like, like everybody, right? If you love your job, you still need to have a little bit of you time. And, and I think that's really the most important. I just need to do, um, get a little break here or there, right? It's, it's like read a book or something. I don't know. So that's kind of my thing, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, totally. So Andrew, do you have any advisor mantra that you would like to share with people that, that you either got imparted onto you or that you just kind of have thought of over time?
Yeah. So, and it actually has a lot to do with running for office, but I think it qualifies for a lot of things in life. Um, and I could have used it probably when I was growing up. Is in everyday life, and I'll just use in my example, as running for office, a lot of people tell you what to do, who to be, what you should say. Honestly, and it sounds so cliche, but just, just be yourself. I, I, you know, people love authenticity and the real reasons of things. And so I, I think for any aspect of life, be authentic, be who you are. And just, you know what? Live your life and your, as yourself. And I think that kind of what, what's going to bring you the most joy in life. Not everyone's going to agree with you and not everyone's going to like you. There's a saying I heard and I can't remember who it was from, but they said, you know what? You could be the sweetest peach on the tree, but some people just don't like peaches. And, and yeah, that's kind of thing, but just be authentic, be yourself. And I think life just has a funny way of working itself out in the end.
I like that last, last one, that last part too. And I mean, I agree with the whole thing, but I like that saying about the peaches too. That's really cool. Okay. So now we just have the fun five left. So these are just five questions I ask every guest. The first one, all right, what is the oldest T-shirt you have and still wear?
It's actually the one I'm wearing right now. It is my, this California shirt. I love the state of California. If you could do like a little tour around my house, it is all California themed. But it's just the, the state flag, I mean, without the, the, the shape of it, but it's the California bear with the little star on top. Just all over. And I've had this shirt for, I don't even know how long now, but it is absolutely one of my favorite shirts.
Yeah. Super. I love California too, actually. I mean, that's one thing that living away from, well, living away from the United States and even in living away from that state several times as an adult. I do know that I love California. So we definitely love the same, the same.
I know like the viewers can't see, but I, I, this during the pandemic, when we had that weird, we're kind of open, but we're not. I got this tattoo actually of the little California bear on my forearm. And it has the word hope in the middle of it. But yeah, big, big fan of this, you know?
So if moving on to a different animal, basically other than the bear, um, if every day was really Groundhog's Day, like it seemed, well, and probably your life, the last nine days or so, um, what song would you have your alarm clock set to play every morning?
Um, it's Move Your Feet by Junior Senior. I think it's just, it's a really fun song. It's just a really fun, like unifying song. And so that, that is what I enjoy to hear about almost every day. And yeah, I also really weird, this, I guess there's a two part. It's Time to Say Goodbye by Sarah, oh goodness, I am, I believe she's an opera singer, but I, I love that song. It, it is, um, I believe Italian and.
Oh, Sarah Brightman.
Yes. I absolutely love that song too. So I guess those two.
Okay, cool.
Which there was one, but sorry.
No, that's all right. Cause sometimes people don't have one I can find on Spotify. So you'll get two on the playlist. Cool. All right. Coffee or tea or neither?
Coffee. I am a big coffee person. I mean, I also like tea, but yeah, every day I need to have a cup of coffee.
Do you like it any certain way or any certain brand or anything?
Um, I just, every morning I have my little cup of coffee with, it's sweetened almond milk. And if I don't have that, it's something called, I think coconut, like it's cocoa and then nut, but like N U T is like brown and cocoa is white. Um, it's an unsweetened coconut creamer with two sweetener packs.
Nice.
Don't know why so specific, but that is it. Yeah.
Well, no, but the theme is that you have some kind of milk and some kind of sweetener. So I got you.
Yeah.
All right. And then can you think of a time that you like laughed so hard, you cried or something that just cracks you up when you think of it? This, this is just for me, because I like to laugh.
Yeah. It, so this probably will not be funny to most viewers, um, or listeners, because it's so weird to explain, but, um, there was this, when we were in San Diego, my friend and I, we were just like my best friend. And we, we were just sitting in our hotel room. Like I think at two in the morning, just cracking up. And it was one of those things, I'm sure everyone has it where they can just really, like they're just with their best friend. And for some reason, no matter what you say, it is just dead hilarious. And I'm, I'm so bad for our neighboring rooms because they probably want to strangle us. But yeah, we were just sitting there, getting up at like two in the morning over, I don't even remember, probably the stupidest thing, but it was just funny. I don't know why, but I have a lot of those moments with my friend where general public will not think it is funny, but we thought it was hilarious. That's just, yeah, we, I think we probably laughed for a solid just 15 minutes, just gasping for air, but then you like think you finally stopped laughing and then you look at each other and then you start laughing again. So yeah, it was a vicious cycle of just gasping for air and cracking up.
That's good. Yeah. And even though it's not something that makes me laugh right now, but it's a feeling I understand for sure.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
That weirdest thing.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, that's good. All right. Last one. Who inspires you right now?
Okay. So this is a, another two person or two answer kind of questions. There are so many different people who inspire me for different reasons, right? But right now, one, rest, God rest her soul, Betty White. Because, right, she just, I don't know how you live that long without having nobody not like you. Like everybody loved Betty White and, and her passion for, for just being a good person and animals and, and charitable work really was just in, incredible to me. I, I, I mean, in Hollywood and just this, this habit of making people happy. And I really admire that about her. And also I grew up watching The Golden Girls. So like, it just, she was wonderful. And for that time too, she took on some really controversial issues at that time, which we don't think are controversial now, but you know? And then my second one is Dolly Parton. I think, you know, again, with the charitable work and to see the foundation that she has and what she does for those who are affected by natural disaster or just focusing education or public health. He, she takes on this, just this really wonderful role of she identifies as a Christian woman who really has dedicated her life, not just to entertaining people, but also you know, making sure the, the world is a better place without, without, I guess, making people upset. And I think that's just such an incredible thing I see in people is it has nothing to do with her. It has nothing to do about the credit that she receives. It's just, she wants to do good work. And, and I really just admire that in, for, for people who've been for that long, you know, it's, it's just incredible to see.
Yeah. And just to stay so consistent and.
Yeah. Yeah. I think it's, it's wonderful. And, and I think it shows people that, you know, you can, you can be beneficial to, to this world at any point in your life and, and nothing should ever deter you from doing it. One thing I heard, which was incredible and I, you know, they say like the one rule, if you're like a time traveler, right? Is never change the past because it can alter the future that you're coming from. And I say that because, um, the, the second part to that, when I heard it was, so why do people think right now the smallest actions that they can do or the, the tiniest impact won't affect future? And so, uh, I think that's just incredible of a lot of people like what I do won't make a difference, but it will. It will, we don't know how, but it can, it will. And you should do that. If you can make any positive impact on this world, I think you should absolutely go for it.
Yeah, totally. Yeah, totally. I agree. I I'm definitely an advocate, and I like that. That's the message you're sharing, because I think that's one reason this podcast is here, is to help people. I mean, part of it's because I really like podcasting in the medium, but a lot of it's just to get people's voices heard and hopefully help other people. So thank you for that. And um as far as if people wanna find you, know more about you, or maybe even contribute to your campaign, where should they go?
Uh, so they can visit my website, andrewtaban.com. So A N D R E W and then T A B, that's in boy, A N, dot com. All my social media is is about the same. So I think like my Twitter is the, like, at Andrew Taban uh C A, like C A for California. Same thing with my Facebook. And then my Instagram is that, but it's andrewtaban.ca. And it has all my information. If they wanna reach out as well, they can contact me through the website. Um, and yeah, just happy to connect with people.
Super. All right, Andrew, thanks so much for joining me. I really appreciate it. It was a lot of fun talking to you and um inspiring, too. So thanks.
Thank you. Awesome. And it's my pleasure to be here. Thank you for having me.
Thanks for listening. You can learn more about the guest and what was talked about in the show notes. Joe Mafia created the music you're listening to. You can find him on Spotify at Joe, M A F F I A. Rob Metke does all the design, for which I am so grateful. You can find him online by searching Rob M E T K E. Please leave your review if you like the show and get in touch if you have feedback or guest ideas. The pod is on all the social channels at at More Than Work Pod or at Robbie a Comedy on TikTok. And the website is morethanworkpod.com. While being kind to others, don't forget to be kind to yourself.